Part two of our school board meeting this evening. We have now reached the action items in our agenda. And item number one is Resolution 2017-18-5, supporting undocumented students.
I move that school board adopt Resolution 2017/18-5, supporting undocumented students and urging the federal government to provide them formal protection against deportation. Immediate action is in the best interests of the district.
I second that motion.
This item came to the Executive Committee on September 12th, where we advanced it for consideration simply because I think it wasn't completed, completely written. Okay, we just needed a policy number to add. And now it is complete. I'm going to hand the mic over to Superintendent Nyland, who's going to talk about why we have this here.
Certainly, I appreciate the board's consideration of this resolution tonight. It continues in the vein of the resolution that the board passed earlier with regard to immigration and the steps that we took to keep students safe. So, the first resolved has to do with our commitment to keep the students in our care safe and do everything we can to make sure that they feel welcome and a sense of belonging as part of the school. And then we do urge Congress to act quickly to restore the, yeah, restore the rights of those students. So, and I guess kind of is a personal point, which I suppose shouldn't, shouldn't apply here. It is, I mean, these are the young people that have been here. They've made it through school. They've got jobs. They are enrolled in the military. They're, they're dreamers. They are part of our American past and they want to be part of our future, so.
Thank you. And I'm just going to read into the record the, the resolution paragraphs at the end, "Now therefore be it resolved," and then I'll open it to questions and comments. "Now therefore be it resolved that the Seattle Public Schools will do our utmost to fulfill our constitutional duty to serve every student, including undocumented students, without regard to race, religion, national origin, or immigration status, and that we are committed to fully creating a safe, welcoming learning space for every student within our care. And therefore be it further resolved that the Seattle School Board of Directors urges Congress to act swiftly to find a positive and permanent solution for the young people who are eligible for protections under the DACA program as it has existed. And therefore be it further resolved that the Seattle School Board of Directors urges the presidential administration to reinstate DACA should Congress fail to act within the designated timeframe." Are there any questions or comments about this resolution? Seeing none, Ms. Check the roll call, please.
Director Burke.
Aye.
Director Harris.
Aye.
Director Petu.
Aye.
Director Gary.
Aye.
Director Blanford.
Aye.
Director Peters.
Aye.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you. Item two, annual approval of schools per WAC 180-16-220.
I move that school board approve each school within the district is having a school improvement plan that is data-driven, promotes a positive impact on school learning, and includes a continuous improvement process pursuant to WAC 180-16-220.
I second that motion.
May we please hear from the Chair of this Curriculum Instruction Committee?
This item was brought before the Curriculum Instruction Policy Committee on June 12th and moved forward for consideration.
Are there any questions or comments about this item?
May we hear from Chief of Schools Storoski about what the history of this item is and where we're going with it?
Good evening, Mike Storoski, Chief of Schools. The continuous school improvement plans have been a process that's been going on for a number of years in Seattle Public Schools. It's a way that schools basically are letting the public know what it is that our schools are aiming to do. This past year, with the support and direction of school board members, specifically Directors Burke and Harris, we realigned our entire CSIP process to reflect what is truly going on in our system, in our schools, to be able to support our buildings and also for Central Office to be able to, in a strategic way, support buildings through the budgeting process, the staffing process, and the scheduling process. And then also that we're clearer and more transparent to our public and more accountable to our public about what it is our schools are doing and why they're doing it, specifically for our students who are on track, our students who need additional supports, including our students with disabilities, our ELL students, and our advanced learners as well. So, I think our plans have gotten very specific. They've gotten clearer. And also, a good push that has happened as a result of this process is that we're being completely transparent about where the extra dollars that go into buildings are being reflected in school budgets. For our LAP title dollars, we, you could look and our public can see where our buildings are putting their priorities. And so, I would say we are excited about how our system can use our CSIPS to provide specific targeted supports. And so, for our Central Office leaders to be able to work with buildings knowing exactly what a building is trying to do and how we can support them. And our ultimate goal is eliminating the opportunity gap and supporting all of our students in schools.
Director Blanford.
Mr. Storoski, have you gotten any feedback from our building leaders as to the usefulness of the changes that have been made?
Yes, I can say very specifically yesterday, a meeting with principals, we had a leadership learning day where all of our principals were here yesterday. And our executive directors of schools were talking with our building principals about their own professional goal setting and reminding our principals, "Start with your CSIP." And the clarity for our building principals to be able to start with their CSIP to see how they're going to build their professional learning goals is a welcomed point of clarity for them. It makes sense to them. It's starting to, for our principals, be able to see the things that they should be working with their BLTs on, with their professional development in their buildings, their priorities. I had a principal yesterday show me, she said, "Here's my three things from our CSIP, and here's this, this three pager." And it wasn't a full three pager, but it had her three building priorities based on her CSIP. She said, "I take this to my BLT. I take this to my professional development committee. I take this to my PTSA." She's just shopping it around. And I thought that was a great example of how the CSIP is not just being a compliance document, but is actually informing practice, getting feedback on practice. And it's just not just for the principal and Central Office. It's a public document and it's involving our teachers as well.
If I can follow up with the second question. I heard concepts of accountability and transparency embedded in your response, which I greatly appreciate. But it seems to me that there's also a front-loaded nature in this of we're telling our communities and our various constituencies what we're going to do over the course of the year. Whereas, that's a great thing. We know from running buildings or understanding how buildings are run that there's a lot of unknowns that happen during the course of the year. And I wonder about the discretion or the flexibility that might be in conflict when you have front-loaded and said, "We're going to do all of these things." How, how does that get negotiated during the course of the year?
So, how it gets negotiated, and this is a great question. So, just from the time that I was before you, two weeks ago, I've had three buildings who are changing and adjusting their CSIPS based on the start of the new school year. They have new information. They have new staff. They have identified different priorities. And so, how they go through that is they go through their building leadership teams. Their building leadership teams are the ones who endorse, support, and vote on those. And how those, they are representative bodies of the staff. Those get brought out back to the staff. Staff have input. Staff help change and adjust those continuous school improvement plans. So, they're just not set in stone in September 1. And that's the only thing that can happen is during that year. As the year is going on and things are changing, the students are changing, new data's coming in, we are 100% in support of our buildings being able to change and adjust as long as they go through the formal process of involving their BLTs and involving their staff and their communities.
Director Harris.
So, when you're talking about BLTs, you're also talking about parent representatives, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, we do have an engagement loop for parents in this process.
Correct, yes.
Director Burke.
I think I've probably already said more than enough about this, but I just want to thank you again for the work. And as kind of a systems geek myself, I'm really excited about how this work has woven in, what are you laughing about? Has woven in with the systems of the district and that I, you know, I see the CSIP reference in, you know, our formula for success. And I see it in our professional development planning. And so, the idea that this is kind of the vision and strategic plan of a school and represents how they relate to all of our central services and how they engage, in some cases with each other, in some cases within themselves, that just absolutely thrills me to no end. So, I want to thank you for that. When you think about sort of change management, you know, you, you need some components. You need, you need vision. You need to get everybody to buy into the vision. And then you need the right systems. And then you need the people to, you know, to change the habits that actually implement. And I think that you've got elements of that built into the CSIP. And I, I do expect that it will continue to evolve. I'll, I'll continue to throw bricks at it when I see things. But I just, again, I'm really impressed by the work and the progress we've made in, in two years. Thank you.
There's no further comments? Ms. Check the roll call, please.
Director Gary. Director Petu.
Aye.
Director Blanford.
Aye.
Director Burke.
I suppose.
Director Harris.
At long last, yes.
Director Peters.
Yes.
This motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. So, we now move on to the introduction items on our agenda. First item, amending board policy number 3432, emergencies. May we hear from the Chair of the Ops Committee, please?
This item was heard by the Ops Committee on September 7th and was moved forward for consideration.
Peggy McAvoy, Assistant Superintendent for Operations. We have had an update through state law on how we are asked to make sure that our schools are prepared for emergencies. And because of that, we are bringing forward an updated school board policy that reflects compliance with that. We did have a robust conversation in the Operations Committee about what the intent was and how we could best serve all of our students. The major changes that you will see in the document are related to the fact that we now need to make sure that we provide drills during summer school, if in fact those schools have classes. The other thing that is very different is that we used to, many years ago, only require fire drills as part of our drill scenario. Then we, several years ago, the legislature decided that we really needed to make sure that schools were doing not only the fire drills or the evacuations, but also lockdowns and sheltering places. And when they developed that, those rules, what they gave us was prescriptive on the number of times each of those drills needed to be conducted within the schools. The new legislation now is giving more latitude to the schools about which drills they're choosing for any particular month. And what they realized was throughout the state, there are different priorities and needs for the types of drills that are needed. For instance, if you're right on the coast and you have tsunamis, you have to do tsunami drills. So, that was part of the rationale for their change. So, what you will see is that we're still required to do monthly drills while school is in session, including summer school. And then, the types of drills that are selected need to be decided upfront by the school. And when they complete drills, those drills need to be posted in the school office so that everybody can see when they did their drills and what type of drills they did. I think the conversation also that we had in, in operations was really about how do we make this a more inspirational? It turned out to be quite a compliance policy. And it also didn't reflect the work that we were doing around supporting some of our students with special needs and how do we make sure that we're supporting them during drills? So, the Operations Committee decided to move it forward for consideration and asked that Director Gary and I work together to augment the language. And so, we have done that. And we added the first sentence at the beginning of the policy, which was more the aspirational language. "It is the policy of the Seattle School Board that the district shall maximize safety for all students and staff so that their focus can be on teaching and learning." The other piece that we added was in Section L, added sentence that says, "Drills will be planned in the manner that is sensitive to the developmental and special needs of students in the school community." And then finally, one that we didn't capture that we had agreed that we were going to capture, which is really just a typo, in number A, it's supposed, or, excuse me, B, it's supposed to read, "Include provisions for the special needs of staff and students." You'll notice the "of" is missing. And we will fix that by the time we go to action.
Director Gary.
Well, I want to give you a special thank you for working with me and allowing us to make those changes. Because I know that it is those unique events that happen in our schools that are such a trigger for so many of our students with special needs. And so, we need to be mindful of that always. And again, I'll say it, say it in committee and I'll say it here, compliance is the minimum. And I hope that we're always striving to look for ways to exceed the minimum and look for what we want to be as a district and how we want to treat our people. So, thank you so much for being willing to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Okay, next item, item number two, adopting new school board policy number 4218, speakers of diverse languages. That came to the Executive Committee on September 12th, where we advanced it for approval. Somebody like to come and address the purpose of this policy?
I apologize about that. Good evening. Super excited.
Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, sorry. YHTSC, Chief Student Support Services. I am super excited to bring forth in front of you for introduction and hopefully with your approval, adoption of a new school board policy number 4218, speakers of diverse languages. And one of the amazing things about this is it helps us do a lot of deep reflection, both using the equity analysis tool as well as our engagement with families just to realize how significant a policy like this is to Seattle Public Schools, where almost 25% of our households here in Seattle that send their students to Seattle Public Schools are identified as where English is not their primary language. And so, when you think about that number, one out of every four, that, that tells us we have a lot of work to do around our engagement. And how are we going to do that if we don't have, what I'd like to say, consistent, high-quality translation interpretation services? And so, with the support of the school board in the last fiscal year, with initial $250,000, as well as now adding an additional $82,700, we can continue to support this work and centralize it. A lot of this work had been out in the schools and site-based or in different departments. By bringing it in-house and being led through the ELL International Programs Department, we now can help review specifically the consistency of those communications, all essential documents being sent out for the various departments and schools to our families to make sure that they are translated in our four primary languages, plus adding on, depending on the different school population, in our nine, top nine languages here in Seattle. Also, what I'll also add is around also that specifically the quality. Quality is really important. There's different things, the different documents we translate, but these essential documents need to be done in very high quality. The feedback that we also received back from the community agencies and community groups was making sure that, that our instructional assistants, then also those who we hired to provide interpretation who are out there do do a good job of making sure that we translate information correctly. And as you mentioned, oftentimes, educational leaves can be really complex. And we also have to take consider their own cultural context. And so, we do do that work very much out there now and are centralizing it, again, with your support. So, this work has now helped support additional bilingual translation staff for separate positions, as well as we have now multiple vendors who can provide off-site and onsite interpretation as needed.
Are there any questions or comments about this item? Thank you. So, the third item is approval of a one-year extension of the strategic plan. This came to the Executive Committee on September 12th, where we advanced it for approval. It actually originated with us as well. The strategic plan currently runs from 2013 to 2018. And we took a look at what's ahead of us on our plate this year. And we saw we had a lot of things. We have some serious budget work to do. We have some transitions to a new board. And so, it was decided that in order to do this process justice, in order to do the necessary outreach to the community and really create a thoughtful next new plan, that we needed more time. And so, this is simply a one-year extension of the current plan that will give everybody a lot more, one more, one more year to put, to get going on the next plan. And so, what that means is probably in late spring is when the board will start to formulate how the process is going to look as they move forward. And then the community engagement part of this will probably be later on in the year, maybe in the fall. So, it's a, it's a request to extend this by one year for all those reasons. Does anybody have any questions about this? Or Superintendent Nyland, did you want to address this at all?
Yes. I concur with the, the recommendation. And I also want to thank the board for staying the course in terms of our strategic plan. So, over whatever, we're obviously at the end of that five-year timeframe. The strategic plan has provided great guidance and direction for the district. And the school board, each year when they have set the SMART goals, have set SMART goals that are well-aligned with the strategic plan. And that has enabled us to, yeah, in my parlance of my illustration, line up our arrows, align our arrows, align our work, and do things like bring the CSIPS together with all of that other work. So, thank you for the commitment to supporting the strategic plan. And I certainly understand why we want to extend it by one more year and appreciate the board's careful guidance and care of that plan that the community has put in place.
Director Gary.
Well, the sentiment was, I think eloquently spoken to by Director Blanford at our retreat, the idea that for those in the community who were looking forward to us revisiting the strategic plan and reviewing that, I can't help but think about how much time and energy we as a district have been forced to put towards our budget over the last year and how that could have been time spent thinking more deeply on other issues. Instead, because if we look back since January, we have on a monthly basis been dealing with trying to figure out what our budget is going to be, what that's going to look like. Are we going to even be able to meet the tenants of our current strategic plan and move forward on that? So, I appreciate the, the sentiment and the concern from the public about the delay. And I apologize for that. But on the other hand, we had this very important issue to contend with. And as we recall, it wasn't really, it is still yet to be fully resolved. And it wasn't until June that we had even a beginning of an idea of what our budget was going to be.
Director Harris and then Director Blanford.
Well, in order to do a good strategic, strategic plan, really robust community engagement needs to occur. And we need to test our new community engagement tools and make sure that we hear from communities that we have not heard from in the past. And we will have a switch-over of a certain number of directors, two, possibly three. And we'll have a switch-over of superintendent mid-next year as well. So, it actually can provide us an opportunity to really do this right.
Director Blanford.
I appreciate Director Gary's reminding us of the point that I made at the retreat. I see the strategic plan as a compact of sorts between the school district and the community, who were instrumental in the creation of the strategic plan. And so, though I, I support all of the reasons that we would delay the, the start of a new strategic plan, they are real reasons that would keep us from considering that in this upcoming year. upcoming year. I think it, it is critically important for us somehow to notify our community partners who participated in the strategic plan process last time around of the delay that we're considering today and will act on next week or two weeks from now. And so, my recommendation would be that we pull out the files and identify all of the community-based organizations and individuals that participated in the planning process the first time around and notify them of the fact that we are delaying the start of the next strategic plan in addition to our regular avenues of communicating. I, I want to be intentional about reaching out to those who have participated in the past because, you know, through our regular channels, it is probable that some of them won't actually see the action that we are considering and will take action on in a couple weeks. So, I would like us to be affirmative in reaching out to them and communicating to them the reasons and the rationale behind our delay.
Director Burke.
And if that requires an amendment to the motion at our next board meeting, then I will be able to make that motion.
Director Burke.
I, I am supportive of this for the reasons that my colleagues have shared. But also, I, my hope is that having the luxury of a little bit more time will provide us the space to, to have a better conversation about how our strategic plan really does engage the community and it really does impact our work. My feeling is that the engagement at a high-level strategic plan level can be unsatisfying for the community because, and in some cases for the board, because it doesn't feel actionable. Whereas, the work around SMART goals, if we can figure out how to better engage the community around SMART goals, both in maintaining continuity with high-priority ones and identifying critical areas for, for growth or change, that's where I would like to, for us to consider as part of our, our future evaluations. So, not so much changing the strategic, the strategic plan per se, but changing more of the implementation aspects of it.
I think, Director Blanford, you made an excellent suggestion that we put some language in this document that acknowledges that we do need to notify people of what we're doing. I think one way to do it would be if you have some language between now and next time we, we look at this, if you have some language you want to send to staff to put into this, we can do that. That's, I think it's a great idea. And I do recall, I think there was, I was on the task force that was working on the strategic plan. I think there were seventy-two of us, heads up. But you can cross one off the list because one of us now knows. Is there any other comments about this item? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to the next item. That is, item four, elevator maintenance and repair contract extension. May I hear from the Chair of the Operations Committee?
This item and the item five and item eight were all heard by the, are considered by the Operations Committee on September the seventh and moved forward for approval.
Good evening. Bruce Scora, Director of Facilities. So, we're here tonight to request school board approval of a one-year extension to our current elevator maintenance and repair contract.
Excuse me, can you please check that your mic is on?
Sure.
I'm not really hearing. Is it on?
Can you hear me?
There we go. Thank you.
Get closer.
We're here tonight to request school board approval of a one-year contract extension to our current elevator maintenance and repair contract with LTAC. LTAC has a state contract for elevator, elevator maintenance and repair. And our current contract with LTAC is based on the state master contract. The contract amount is two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, two-hundred dollars, which is a sixteen-percent increase over the previous year. An increase is due to the increase in number of sites serviced. We're adding eight sites. And the total number of elevators, we're adding thirteen. So, we're moving from a total of one-hundred-and-fifteen elevators to one-hundred-and-twenty-eight. Any questions?
Okay, Director Petu.
So, are you saying that all hundred-and-seven elevators need, they all need to be worked on?
We are required by State LNI to do a quarterly maintenance on all elevator cabs. So, the, the contract is for that quarterly maintenance program and also any emergency maintenance repairs that are required.
So, it's every quarter?
Every quarter.
These have to have maintenance?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
Big, big problem.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, thank you. Next item, item number five, approval of property sale, three-hundred-and-fifteen square feet for the South Lander Street Grade Separation Right-of-Way. May we please hear from the Operations Committee Chair?
You're here.
On this one?
Yeah.
On items four, five.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Four, five, and eight, all the same.
Thank you.
So, we're requesting approval for the sale of three-hundred-and-fifteen square feet of district property to the City of Seattle for the South Lander Street Grade Separation Project. The city needs the land to complete the project as designed. If we don't approve, we'd have to change the design. And the property is basically for the east footing for the bridge. The offer is also includes damages for the net loss of one parking stall due to the project. So, the total offer from the city is fifty thousand, five-hundred-and-forty dollars, twenty thousand, five-hundred-and-forty for the three-hundred-and-fifteen square feet of property, and then thirty thousand for the loss of the one parking stall.
I have a question. So, who assessed the value of that land?
So, it was assessed by the city. It was reviewed by the city, and then we had the opportunity to review it. And due to the tight timeline, we let them know it needs to be good because they're planning on starting in January. And obviously, if this isn't accepted by the district, they're not starting in January. So, after reviewing it, we feel that we got a fair offer.
Okay, so this, this matches what this district feels is the value of that?
It does.
Because this is, you know, the city assessing something that it's going to pay for.
It is, but they were kind of under the gun on this one. We kind of had the advantage on this one.
All right.
Which is rare.
Okay, thank you. Director Blanford.
But how do we know what the value of the land is? Because if the city's assessing it, they have an obvious interest in giving us the lowest possible figure. How internally do we know that the figure, their bid, is actually a valid bid?
So, we had reviewed by our property management team and also by legal. You know, we'd had some recent assessments done. One for the Lowell Right-of-Way, we did an assessment there. So, we felt that this was in line and was a little bit more than we expected, actually. And I think that was because that they knew we had to accept this or they're going to potentially spend millions and redesign.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item, item six, Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, Beginning Educator Support Team, which is the BEST grant approval. May we please hear from the Chair of Curriculum and Instruction Committee?
This came to the CNI Committee September twelfth and was moved forward to the board for approval.
Hi, I'm Chris Drake. I'm the Program Manager for the STAR Mentor Program and for the Seattle Teach residency. And I'm happy to be able to introduce what is an expansion of our BEST grant. A little bit of background, this is, this supports the STAR program, which is our teacher induction program that is very clearly directed to the recruitment, retention, and induction of teachers into SPS. And also, foundationally set in our work toward institutionalizing racial equity, as well as our work around the PAR, the Peer Assistance Review Process. So, it's, it's nice to be able to present this as something connected to two of the three pillars of the formula for success. Some quick background on the STAR program to set the context. We are a program that's been in place for over twenty years. It's part of the CBA, so it's a partnership between the district and SEA. And it's a, a robust mentorship and induction program for all new-to-profession teachers in Seattle Public Schools. We currently have thirteen and with the grant, hopefully fourteen, full-time release mentors who support, each carry a caseload of new-to-profession teachers. Each year, it is in the neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty new-to-profession teachers that we support through that. And the basic components of the STAR program are one-on-one mentorship that's focused on support and challenge and instructional growth for our new-to-profession teachers that is at least thirty hours of, of one-on-one connection between mentors and teachers over the course of the year. So, that's the primary context of our work. We also offer second-year support as an opt-in. And that is actually the piece that's funded historically by the BEST grant. And that is a, a context of four Release Day sessions that focus on particular components of the Danielson Framework that also entail follow-up work with the mentors in small groups in between sessions. So, that's the quick context of our work. In terms of, of the grant, for the past three years, we've received BEST grant funding that has allowed us to fund the second-year support. The second-year support is in addition to the, the context and the caseload that the mentors work with the first-year teachers. This year, for the first time, we've been eligible to, because our program is so robust, prior to this, we've not been eligible for funding that is tied to first-year teachers. So, this year, we were able to apply for funding of fifty first-year teachers. If we applied for all of our first-year teachers, we would consume most of the BEST grant in the district, excuse me, in the state. So, we were able to apply for funding for fifty of those teachers. So, this will both support the, the ongoing work of our second year, as well as it will allow us to add an additional mentor FTE that will lower our overall caseloads and support our work around the PAR implementation.
Director Harris.
I couldn't be more in favor of this work, and thank you for doing it.
Happy to.
I do have some questions about sustainability and how we fund this district. And I understand why we go for grants because of McClary at all. But at what point can we fold this into our operating budget? Because this expresses our values.
All right, I, I can speak to that in the short term. And if Clover wants to speak more, I'll let her do that as well. One response to that would be the, the current context of our, our STAR Mentor Program as in addition to the second-year support is really being folded into our work in the PAR context, which is a comprehensive approach to how we support teachers in their first three years, their provisional years within the district. We have, our, our baseline and Title II funding has fully supported our first-year program. We were able to expand into second year through the BEST grant, which is renewable.
But isn't our Title II funding disappearing in large measure?
I will let Ms. Cott answer.
I might not be able to be as specific as you'd like. Sorry, Clover Cott, Assistant Superintendent of HR. But this is part of our work with SEA over last year and this year to look at our STAR Mentor Program, our Evaluation and Support Consulting Teacher Program, our Career Letter Teacher Program, and how we bring all those into alignment so that we can truly support with the resources that we currently have already built into our collective bargaining agreement, new-to-profession teachers in their first three years, and then any teachers who are veteran but may be struggling with one or more areas of their practice. So, this is part of a comprehensive relook into our teacher evaluation and support system. So, we are thinking about sustainability. The PAR program, the STAR program, is not contingent upon these grants. We do have this program built into our collective bargaining agreement already. This is, this grant provides some additional support and capacity for us to actually enter into this PAR pilot this year, lower caseloads a little bit.
Director Blanford.
Chris, I'd like to thank you for your stewardship of this program and particularly for connecting it in your, the first part of your remarks, connecting it to the goals that we have around improving student achievement overall and particularly in closing our opportunity gaps. I, for a long time, have seen this as one of our most robust strategies for actually accomplishing those things. And am pleased to see that we were able to identify funding externally. I've been part of some of those conversations with, with folks externally to try to find additional funding for this. And, you know, I think lots of people look at it like it should be part of our base operating funds. And so, it makes it more difficult to, to pitch it as something that is worthy of support. Though, the fact that we are inducting teachers, putting them in some of our more challenging schools, they are staying with us over time, they are changing the culture of the school, right, to be more focused on gap closure, seems to me to be one of those, what do they call it, force multipliers, right, where a little bit of work has a leverage impact on the entire school. And so, I'm hopeful that you will be able to identify other sources of funds because I have the same concerns that are shared by Director Harris around sustainability as our budgets get tight. But want to celebrate the fact that we have crossed this bridge in the short term and that we can look out, it gives us a little bit of time and space to be thinking about what's the next big ask. But I want to thank you for your leadership of this program, and it's worthy of celebration. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number seven, Raynor Beach School Improvement Grant, SIG Year Four Funding. May we please hear from the Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee?
This came from before Audit and Finance, September eleventh, for approval. Recommended approval.
Good evening, Directors, Michael Stone, Director of Grants. And I am bringing forward some additional funding that has been provided by the Department of Ed to continue the approved school improvement grant from 2014. They were providing an additional one-point-one million dollars, with some change, for Raynor Beach to continue the transformation plan that they started in 2014 in building a robust program around international baccalaureate program and increasing graduation rates.
Director Blanford.
In the Audit and Finance Committee, if I'm remembering correctly, there was a little bit of conversation about underspend. Can you share that part with us?
So, originally, in the spring, we were notified from the state that they would be receiving about three-hundred thousand dollars of, of underspend from prior years. That was then changed, and I didn't get clarification yet, and I can from the state, I apologize, on was that rolled into this one-point-one million? We were informed this was, the underspend was taken off the table and this new funding was brought forward. So, I think it has all been incorporated, but I will confirm that.
And the reason I ask that question is just because if there's underspend, it, it would be important to the Raynor Beach community to be clear and say that the underspend goes away and here is a new grant.
Here, here is new, here is an extension of the prior grant.
Right.
Yeah, so they're extending it one more year with some funding. There could be underspend in the future. OSPI has not given us any indication as to that possibility.
Okay.
But yeah, the underspend was, the three-hundred thousand was pulled back and this one-point-one million was brought forward instead.
So, so will the guidance to the administrators at Raynor Beach, will that be to spend this money while it's available?
Yes, that has been. And we've also been talking, as we've had the sustainability discussion about how do we move forward with this work and not make it staff-dependent so that we can still keep the systems in place that they have put in place and keep it moving forward.
Superintendent Nyland and then Director Harris.
I appreciate all the comments. We do certainly want to give as much continuity and sustainability as possible to the principal and to the rest of us. This is part of the continuing, evolving structure of the universe. So, the funding that comes to us from the federal government, we know Title II was eliminated. It's now restored in the Senate budget, but that would require negotiations. So, we're hopeful that we're going to get part of the Title II money back. Title I, I think it was about a twenty-percent cut that we had in our budget. But part of that cut is that the state has a mandatory set aside that's bigger than it has been in the past, which I'm pretty sure is why Raynor Beach has ended up with some additional money. So... So it's all evolving, and we'll try to keep up, and we'll try to keep people notified. In this case, we lost something on Title I coming in on the front end, and they took it out at OSPI, but then they turned around and gave it back to us as a specific school improvement grant for Rainier Beach. So I think maybe after this year, it will settle out, and the state will know a little bit more about what they can expect, because those federal rules changed quite a lot this year.
Director Harris?
You know where I'm going. The International Baccalaureate Program.
Yes, ma'am.
Is more expensive a program to run than other programs.
Mm-hmm.
We have given the IB schools one more FTE, but I don't know that we have given them additional funding for the more expensive texts and to safety net the very expensive testing fees. And we've heard substantial testimony from Ingram, Chief South International High School, which also has high poverty, which also requires each of their students to take at least one IB course and mandates 11th grade language arts, I believe. I appreciate building-based leadership. I appreciate the innovation that comes with that, but at what point are we actually going to sustain programs that we put in place and keep our promises? How does that work SIG with funding IB?
It's limited, because there are federal requirements around the funding that it is following Title I rules, and it is supplemental to support the work to turn the school around. It was used to support the professional development for all teachers in the IB program, so all teachers at Rainier Beach have been that. But to get to what your question is, I don't have an answer.
But haven't we thrown a lot of money Southeast Education Initiative? The Southeast Initiative 10 years ago?
Before my time.
And we didn't see, before your time, others in this building recall it well, and we didn't see a large closing of the opportunity gap, and we spent a great deal of money. So I'm confused about analysis of what we've done before, and if we're indeed a data-driven district, where's the data?
I'm struggling a little with the last two comments that have been made about sustainability. You know, frequently, we're up here talking about the fact that there's not sufficient resources to do everything that is required by the district, and ultimately, it's we around this table who make the funding decisions about where things go. By the time a new board, by the time a new decision on a budget rolls around, I won't be on this board anymore. But my hope is that we, that future board members exercise the authority to, if sustainability is important and valuable, to try to infuse it into the budget, that budgets that we have going forward. That said, I think that's a difficult exercise, because the prior conversation that we were having about McClary means that we will continue to struggle to maintain the baseline, you know, and hopefully shift priorities in order to get the biggest bang for the buck. But I think it's maybe not the best way to interrogate our, those who are running our programs, to be driving towards sustainability when we don't have the revenue to give to them to be able to sustain our programs going forward. The nature in the four years that I've been on this board is that we have done things, you know, a little bit at a time. We have some money, we put it into the program, we make the investment on the short term. I would love to be able to say for the next 10 years, we will guarantee that IB is sufficiently funded, or whatever is sufficiently funded, but I don't see the revenue streams that allow us to make that kind of a commitment. And so I would just encourage us to be thoughtful about the best ways to work with our managers, program managers, to keep our programs up and running for as long as possible.
Director Gary?
This may have nothing to do with the SIG grant, other than to say, I want us to be mindful that when we're -- I appreciate Director Harris's point about us figuring out ways to continue to fund the IB program at Rainier Beach. I think that's really important. But I see that as like, using terms like basic ed, right? If we're doing it in some of our schools, then we need to make sure, once we've committed to it, we're going to figure out a way, that we're going to commit to it at Rainier Beach. And if it's going to be at Ingram, it's going to be at Rainier Beach, and we're not going to get rid of it at Beach unless we're going to really examine whether we can sustain that program equitably in our district for our kids. And that using monies that are identified to address different particular needs, contributing to the achievement gap, need to continue to be focused in addition to the funding of the program, which is the basic goal. And it's just so easy to get, well, we'll just use this money to fund what we should be funding as a district, when it's a special pot. So we just need to be mindful to protect that pot and continue to look about ways to equitably fund that which should be equitably distributed. My only comment.
Director Petu?
So I know that when schools actually are getting grants, and then they have so many years for them to actually to be able to do the work that they need to do to actually to restructure the whole school in terms of moving it forward. Now, don't we have data that actually that tells us exactly how successful, what's been done overall from the beginning when they actually start those grants? What they have done in order for them to actually to raise academic scores and vice versa?
So I didn't pull any SBA data or MAP data, but I did put down in the bar the increase of graduation rate from 2014 to current of going from 57% to 81%. So that is a large increase in just on-time graduation rate for students at Rainier Beach High School.
And I'm aware of that, but I wanted to actually to kind of go back, you know, I hear this a lot, where there's been, grants has been actually been given to that school in 10 years' times, and that has not, we have not seen any progress, you know, in terms of those past grant. We see a lot of progress now in terms of what we're looking at right now, like graduation rate have tremendously have been raised. But I guess my question is, did we actually look at those, the 10 years beforehand that actually were, the grants was given, and what progress were those being made before we actually moved forward to where we are today?
Which, are you talking the southeast?
I'm talking about southeast, the grants that were given to Rainier Beach in the past.
I would need to know those specific ones, so I can go back and look at what the projected outcomes were and work with research and evaluation to find that data. I don't have anything on file, because I, we don't keep, I don't have records back that far.
So we don't go back 10 years? We don't have any records anywhere that tells us exactly what happened to the grants that we have actually given out beforehand?
I don't have anything on file. I could go look for it. I would have to find that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
So the graduation rates, as you point out, have gone up considerably during the time, well, preceding and then during the time of this grant. So that's one data point we can look at. I think what, in terms of what my colleagues have been talking about, sustainability, it's good to have these resources, but we also don't want to start something we can't, that has to suddenly stop, you know? So what is the future of the SIG grant? Is it something that can be extended indefinitely? I'm assuming not.
The, we didn't know we were going to get this funding until July. So this was one-time funding to extend it for one more year. Under every student succeeds, there, the funding that Dr. Nyland was talking about that is extra pulled off top will now be put back out to districts with schools that are in the lowest 5% or are not meeting graduation rates. That funding will come back out the district in the form of school improvement grants at the state level, not from the federal government, from those Title I funds that have been pulled from every district. They pulled another $700,000 from our Title I allocation to put into that fund to put back out, because they now can pull 7% instead of 4% for administrative purposes down at OSPI, and also to put back out for school improvement.
All right. And I sort of appreciate, yeah, Director Petu's question about the history. I mean, I think it would be helpful if we were able to have more of a sense of what grants are leading to good results, you know, and that would help us better understand. And what's the magic combination of not just the grant, but who's working with it and what they're doing with it? As far as history goes, I'd like to make a request that between now and the time that this is brought to us for action, that you attach the original grant to this, because I know there's about, I think most of the directors were not here when this SIG grant was initially granted to the district, and that we'll give them a chance to read about it and see what the goals were and the stipulations of it.
And I can attach the application that was put in for the funding for this year also that is currently under OSPI review.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, Director Petu?
I just want to add to that, that it really would be great when grants end, we'd really like to see exactly what progress have been made from the time the grant was granted to the time it ended. So that way, at least we know what's working and what's not working, because adding grants to something that's not working doesn't make any sense. And I know that there's, you know, there's been cases where we keep adding, and I'm not talking about it particularly for this particular grant, this grant that we've been given to different various programs, and yet we see no progress, but yet the grant keeps going in. So I really would like to see what results are we getting out of these grants, so we can really look at that and be able to, you know, be able to make sure that if it's working in a certain, at a certain school, or they're doing something differently, then we would like to actually to use those same processes to be able to, that other schools can also be able to work the same way.
Then I'll work with you to get a list of which grants specifically you want addressed.
Director Blanford?
In response to Director Petu's question, I went onto the OSPI website, the publicly-available website, and I see that from at least 2005, I couldn't click back far enough, but at least from 2005, 2006, there is an annual on-time graduation rate for Rainier Beach for each year from 2005, '06 on. And so that would give some longitudinal information about graduation rates during the time of the grant that might be useful, and that's publicly-available information. It's on the OSPI website, if you scroll down and get to Rainier Beach High School.
Thank you.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
Just in the world of Rainier Beach High School, a recommendation that I have just around data tracking, I mean, I think the graduation rates is a really good one. Kelly Arumaki, Executive Director, used to oversee Rainier Beach High School, but they are keeping a lot of data at Rainier Beach High School around IB participation, full diploma participation, and the data that they have around students of color accessing international baccalaureate classes and the IB program, the diploma program, is really stunning. And when you look at the roadmap research, when they show South Seattle, the participation of kids of color in IB classes is really stunning. And so I think that would be a good place for us to track some data around, especially the SIG grant, because the graduation rates tells part of the story, but they're, the data around getting students of color to access advanced coursework is really something to see. So Colin Pierce is the IB Coordinator at Rainier Beach High School. He does an amazing job tracking that data and trying to make his case for further supporting the program, so.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Kelly? You know, that's really great to hear all those wonderful things happening in terms of those test scores, but how do we publicly actually put that out there so people know that there's great progress that's actually happening at the beach? Because as I'm out there talking to people, you know, it really hurts me when people say, "Rainier Beach is a terrible school." And I know for a fact it's not a terrible school. There's great progress that's happening at that school. So, you know, what do we do in terms of actually letting people know that this school is actually moving forward and high graduation rate, and that kids are actually progressing, instead of, you know, we don't see anything like that happening on the website? So it'd be great if we can actually put it out there.
Yes, I agree with that. And I think one way is to highlight it at the school board meeting, so we can do that maybe as part of renewing or extending this grant for one more year, just to highlight the progress that they've made as part of our rationale for extending it a year. But they've been getting awards too. So I think that it's important for us to do that. Just a side note about international baccalaureate and why it's, it's a gap closer, not just when you look at like smarter balance assessment, like the, it's not necessarily that we're going to see the gap closing in that assessment alone, but when you talk to students that come out of Rainier Beach High School, there are so many stories of the students saying, when they tell other kids, "I went to Rainier Beach High School," they know that they're not respected by a lot of kids who go to different high schools. But when they say, "And I graduated with an IB diploma," it changes the whole story. You know, the international baccalaureate diploma is internationally recognized as rigorous, and to be able to pass the tests and to get that diploma, it shows that you've reached an international standard for academics. And so it's important for schools like Rainier Beach High School to have programs like that, so that when they're confronted with people who look down on them because they went through Rainier Beach High School, with all of the bias that comes with that, they can show their diploma, which translates into people understanding what that success means and what rigor looks like at Rainier Beach High School.
Thank you. Director Blanford?
But Mr. Arumaki, you're not saying, and I don't think you're saying this, but I want to be clear, you're not saying that a graduate from Rainier Beach High School that doesn't have an IB diploma cannot be proud of their diploma?
Oh, no, absolutely not. I'm just talking about changing perception about Rainier Beach High School, because the students want to change that perception, and they should be proud. And even if the students don't get an IB diploma, part of what Rainier Beach is doing is making sure that all students have access to that rigor and making it public that students that go to Rainier Beach High School, even if they don't get the IB diploma, are still expected to take international baccalaureate courses.
And I knew that was the case. I just, I didn't hear that.
Thank you for clarifying. I don't want that to come out.
I didn't hear that in your first remark, so I wanted to be clear that we expect that regardless of if you're enrolled in the IB program or enrolled in some other program. If you graduate from Rainier Beach High School, your diploma has meaning.
Yes, that's right.
And is of value.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that.
There's no further questions or comments? Thank you. All right. We had another item on the agenda, but that's going to be deferred to a different meeting because it needs to be reviewed through the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. So now we move on to our final item of the evening, and that's the BTA III and BEX IV Final Acceptance of Public Works Contract K5059 with Western Ventures Construction Incorporated for the seismic green energy and re-roofing Adams Elementary School projects. And I believe we've already heard from the Ops Committee, so go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mike Scutac, Senior Project Manager of the Capital Projects and Planning Department. This board action, if approved, would acknowledge the final acceptance of public works contract K5059 with Western Ventures Construction for seismic green energy and re-roofing at Adams Elementary School for the purposes of avoiding disputes concerning the timing of the filing of liens prior to the release of the contractor's retainage bond. The architect, Dul Olson Weeks, has recommended acceptance. Project closeout checklist has been completed. Accounting records have been verified. The project finished about 620... The project finished about $623,000 under budget. And the green energy project was partially funded by $500,000 OSPI Energy Efficiency Grant, and that was converted into a geothermal loop. Are there any questions?
Apparently not. So, thank you very much. So, since all business has been addressed this evening, I now call this meeting adjourned at 7:59 PM. Thank you, everybody.